Followed by a moment of silence for our own personal reflections for this very blessed time of the year. Also, a moment of silence for Ms. Elsmamala, who recently passed away. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, I'm going to ask everyone to speak directly into the microphone so we can be heard by the viewers at home. Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vines.
Here. Let the record reflect, nine present, zero absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spatelli.
Motion to accept the minutes for December tenth, two thousand and eighteen, to be placed on file.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the minutes of the December tenth meeting. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to approval of claims.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, December fifth through two thousand and eighteen through December twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, for council meeting December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. Beginning with claims dated twelve-ten-eighteen and ending with claims dated twelve-twelve-eighteen, claim number seven-three-zero-zero, through claim number seven-five-zero-one inclusive for three million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of claims from December fifth through December twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Several additions. Claim number seven-five-zero-two, attorney Berger, one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars for attorney fees. Seven-five-zero-three, Green Tree Enterprises, one thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-six cents. Service landfill, seventy-five-zero-four, ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, Westland and Bennett, P.C. Data center fees. Claim number seventy-five-zero-five, Indiana Grocery Group, LLC, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-one, forty-nine cents. Paper supplies for clerk's office. Claim number seventy-five-zero-six, Chicago Title Company, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Purchase four-hundred B.L.N., Indianapolis Boulevard data center redevelopment. Would imagine that's for purchase of property. Claim number seven-five-zero-seven, Westland and Bennett, three thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Oxbow Landing and miscellaneous matters. Seventy-five-zero-eight, City of Hammond, fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. Transfer fund, two-thirty-four to fund two-thirty-six for Juan Moreno's two thousand and eighteen Claim number seventy-five-zero-nine, City of Hammond, fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Transfer fund two-eighty-three to fund two-thirty-six for Juan Moreno's salary, two thousand and eighteen salary. Claim number seventy-five-ten, five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Transfer from fund two-eighty-four to fund two-thirty-six for Juan Moreno's two thousand and eighteen salary. Claim number seven-five-one-one, three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents. Transfer fund two-ninety to fund two-thirty-six for Juan Moreno's two thousand and eighteen Claim number seven-five-one-two, City of Hammond, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety cents. Transfer from fund two-ninety-one to fund two-thirty-six for Juan Moreno's two thousand and eighteen salary. Claim number seven-five-one-three, ten thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. Transfer from claim number, fund number two-ninety-two to fund two-thirty-six for Juan Moreno's two thousand and eighteen salary. Claim number seventy-five-one-four, ten thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty cents. Transfer from fund two-ninety-five to fund two-thirty-six for Juan Moreno's two thousand and eighteen salary. Claim number seven-five-one-five, Mike Albert Leasing, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Total loss on settlement of vehicle, VIN number, case number, I believe, three oh four five four. Claim number seventy-five-sixteen, Mike Albert Leasing, one hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-six cents. That's for Mike Albert Leasing, Fleet Leasing due on one-one-nineteen, and Fleet Leasing due on one-one-nineteen. Madam Chair, President, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of the amended claims. Is it necessary for me to go through all of them? Clerk Golick?
No.
Thank you. Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
You gotta have a discussion, point of order.
Oh, any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes.
Heather, could you please step to the podium and explain why the transfer for Juan's salaries?
Good evening, Council. Juan's position is the TIF coordinator, and so part of his salary is being allocated to the allocation areas in which he's done projects. So what he's done over the years is track his ti, or over this year, is track his time on each TIF-specific project, and then they disperse them amongst those allocation areas. So it's helped to take a little bit of burden off of the redevelopment general fund with the circuit breaker losses we've experienced. And their apologies, redevelopment has their last meeting of the year tomorrow, and they didn't realize that it was, you guys were meeting before them, so that's why you have a lot of redevelopment claims.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
What is this total salary, Heather? Can you tell me?
Councilman Higgs? I don't think it's appropriate to keep summoning staff up here for every single question you have. I just don't. You do this every meeting.
Mayor, I'm trying.
We're in there. We're in there. We talk, and then you come in here and you summon, I mean, it's been.
I didn't see the addition.
Listen, it's making my staff members not want to show up here because they're sitting in the audience trying to watch our government, and you summon them up like they're your servants, and it's not that way. So if you have questions, I'd ask you, we go through all these back there in the room. We could clear all this stuff up, but you come out on the floor and you summon people up like, "Come up here, answer this question for me," and it's inappropriate. And I talked to my staff about it this morning, Councilman Higgs, specifically.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Mayor, the reason for me requesting this, I was not given these claims in caucus. Had I been given them to me and had the opportunity to actually reveal them, I didn't cut you off, please don't cut me off. It's respect for one another. I simply asked the question, and as a councilman, I have an obligation to find out what's going on as it affects the city. So I don't see a problem with it, and I don't know why would you have a problem with it.
Because it's out of hand.
Simple question.
It's out of hand, Councilman Higgs. It happens too much every minute.
That's your feelings.
That's right, and I'm their boss. So I'm up here, I'm sitting here. If you have a question, I'd ask for you.
Unfortunately, this is the way I feel about it, so, I mean, I don't know what else to tell you.
You can vote against it, I guess, if you really feel strongly about it.
Any other discussion?
I asked the question.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call on the amended claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Amended claims pass, nine-zero. Now four claims as written. Clerk Golick?
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving, moving on to public hearings. There are none communications.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
As I stated previously, as a councilman of the third district of the City of Hammond, I feel this is an obligation, as an elected official, to ask any questions as I so choose. It's nothing personal against anyone. As a councilman, I feel that it's my obligation to find out if there's a question or something I need to have answered. Simple.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I want to send my condolences to the Lewis family and the loss of their mother. That's Dennis Lewis and Ann Lewis and the rest of the family.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications are now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Finance will be bringing out eighteen-twenty-nine and eighteen-thirty.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Counselors will be bringing out eighteen dash thirty-two.
Thirty-four.
Thirty.
Thirty-two, fifteen.
Thirty-three?
Eighteen-thirty and eighteen-thirty-four.
Okay. Eighteen-thirty-two and eighteen-thirty-four.
Okay.
We didn't have a hearing.
Thank you very much. And I don't have my list of the upcoming community and crime watch meetings for the rest of the year, but I would like to encourage everyone to attend one of those meetings in your neighborhood to find out what is going on in your neighborhood and some safety precautions that one can take to protect their property and their family. And from the community and crime watch groups to the entire City of Hammond, we wish you all a very merry and safe and happy new year. Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final passage.
Ordinance eighteen dash twenty-nine, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. An ordinance fixing the salaries for elected city officials for the City of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January one, two thousand and nineteen, be ordained by the common council of the City of Hammond.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spatelli.
For final passage of eighteen-twenty-nine?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, was that second by Councilman Warple? Second by Councilman Warple for final passage of eighteen-twenty-nine. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spatelli.
Two percent raise for the elected officials commencing on June first, January first, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
As it reflects a two percent raise for all the elected officials, as a councilman, I would like to say that in previous years, I was able to attend conferences, and money was allotted for conferences for each councilman, for somehow or another, that all disappeared. And I felt it was personally an attack on me as a councilman of the third district of the City of Hammond. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please, on eighteen-twenty-nine.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Eighteen-twenty-nine passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance eighteen dash thirty, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. An ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer funds from one line item to another within various city two thousand and eighteen budgets.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spatelli.
Move for final passage of eighteen-thirty?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson for final passage of eighteen-thirty. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Eighteen-thirty passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance eighteen dash thirty-two. The petitioner is the Hammond City Plant Commission, and the council sponsor is Councilman Rakels. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number eighty-five-fourteen. An ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as thirty-seven-oh-two, thirty-seven-oh-four, thirty-seven-ten, thirty-seven-sixteen, thirty-seven-twenty-four, and thirty-seven-seventy-two Orchard Drive.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
I move for final passage and adoption of eighteen-thirty-two.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, second by Councilman Higgs, for final passage of eighteen-thirty-two. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Eighteen-thirty-two passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance eighteen dash thirty-four, sponsored by Councilman Rakels. An ordinance amending ordinance numbers sixty-fourty-nine, seventy-four, seventy-two, eighty-six, twenty, eighty-six, thirty-eight, eighty-six, sixty-nine, ninety-one, eighty-one, and ninety-two, forty-two, also known as section thirty-two-point-zero-two-zero of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to required updates to the Hammond Personnel Policy Manual.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
Move for final passage and adoption with the, one difference in listing of it, it's actually thirty-seven-point-zero-two-zero. I think he said thirty-two.
Point of order.
Councilman Higgs.
Point of order is that he needs to amend his motion to reflect the changes.
Make a motion to pass eighteen dash thirty-four.
Motion by Councilman Rakels. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spatelli for final passage of eighteen-thirty-four. Councilman Rakels, I understand you have an amendment.
No.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Well, I want to amend it to, for, say, also known as section thirty-seven-point-zero-two-zero. And I also have two other amendments, if I could do that.
Yes, please.
On page forty-eight, the end of the first paragraph, where it says ninety days needed to be changed, needs to be changed to sixty days, to mirror the language on the previous page, on page forty-seven. Also, on page sixty-one, the paragraph that refers to sick days, the words "an original" needs to be added to, added prior to the words "doctor's statement" to mirror language in the policy. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, second by Councilman Higgs, to amend on page forty-eight from ninety days to sixty days. And also on page sixty-one, "original" must be inserted before "doctor's note." Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Markovich.
Probably should explain to the listening audience, these are changes in adoption to the personnel policy, where they've had to make some changes per federal guidelines, and these are just some typo errors that had to be put back in there in place of that.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Are you requesting Councilman Markovich that one of the department heads step to the podium and explain that?
No.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
It's unfortunate that we had our department head here through the whole caucus, and there was no questions, and she asked whether or not she can go home, and I told her to go home. So, I mean, she was sitting in caucus, and there was no questions. Then we come out on the floor, and suddenly there's a bunch of questions. So I don't know if you guys, I mean, this has been pending before you for.
I believe the two amendments are very clear.
Mm-hmm.
So Clerk Golick, please forgive me, do we have to vote on the amendment first and then the original?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So is there any other discussion on the amendments, changing the number of allotted sick days on page forty-eight from ninety to sixty, and also inserting the word "original" prior to a doctor's note on page sixty-one? That we do have to have an original doctor's note on page sixty-one? Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I am so pleased to actually recognize that Sharon Daniels was in caucus, and she did hand out additional information as it relates to this. So I did receive that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Just for your point of clarity.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. The amendment passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now for final passage of eighteen-thirty-four.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Eighteen-thirty-four passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vines, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions. Oh, I am sorry. I guess I want to get out of here quickly this evening. Moving on to introduction of ordinances. Thank you very much.
Item A, ordinance eighteen dash thirty-five. The petitioners were the Hammond Plant Commission and the Redevelopment Commission, and the councilman sponsor was Councilman Kalwinski. Ordinance of the Hammond Common Council authorizing the City of Hammond, Indiana to issue its taxable economic development tax, increment revenue bonds, Hammond OPCO LLC project, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
I move that eighteen dash thirty-five move through first and second reading with a committee meeting on oh-one-fourteen-eighteen at five P.M. with council as a whole.
Second.
Councilman, I do believe that would be January fourteenth of nineteen.
Thank you. Stand corrected.
Yes, thank you. All righty, Councilman Higgs, second. Are you seconding the corrected?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Higgs, for first and second reading of eighteen thirty-five, referring to council as a whole, with a committee meeting at five P.M. on January fourteenth of two thousand and nineteen. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
President Vines, that concludes the reading of the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you so much. How about if we try resolutions now?
Item A, resolution eighteen R dash forty-eight, sponsored by Councilman Rakels. A resolution designating the City of Hammond as a complete streets community and adopting a complete streets policy.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
I'm making a motion to approve eighteen R forty-eight.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, second by Councilman Warple, for final passage of eighteen R forty-eight. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
If I could have Councilman Rakels explain this particular resolution and how it affects our residents of this great city.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
As was explained in caucus, it's a way to complete streets designed to operate and enable safe access for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, transit riders of all ages and abilities, and help create livable communities for various types of users, improving equity, safety, and public health. Includes like sidewalks, bike lanes, bus lanes, frequent and safe crossing units, medium islands, accessible pedestrian signals and such. It's something that most communities have adopted, and it helps us also, helps us with a plan for the city for things like NERC and things like that.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I might add a little bit, I'm on the executive committee at NERC, and NERC is the go-between between us and the federal government when it comes to federal funds and projects that are supported by federal funds. It's a highly competitive process, where we have to score on each project better than the other communities to get the funding, and this is one more checkmark in our favor that helps us obtain a higher score at NERC, which gives us a better chance of getting federal funds for these projects that are very expensive, I mean, big projects like Kennedy Avenue, stuff like that. So we're not talking about the typical projects we tackle, these are the ones at one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth, one-hundred-and-sixty-ninth, the big ones. So this is, it's a planning process that causes us to think differently in the future road projects, thinking about accessibility, thinking about, you know, bike paths and stuff like that. So it's basically a commitment from the city that we're going to think differently in the future when we plan our projects.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Thank you, Mayor, for explaining that. I really appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please, on final passage of eighteen R forty-eight.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Eighteen R forty-eight passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next on the agenda is new and unfinished business with an intent to consider on eighteen thirty-two. By virtue of us passing that ordinance earlier in the evening, we do not need to address that. Any new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
In the six thousand block of Tapper, NIPSCO light zero nine zero has been out for two months. Ms. Marie, who's a senior citizen, and also Ms. King have contacted me on several occasions. I submitted a letter and I'm also requesting that a letter be sent to NIPSCO again in regards to this particular NIPSCO light so that the residents can see out their windows and out their doors. I so move.
Councilman, did we not receive a letter from NIPSCO requesting that we do not contact them by mail for that? That I'll have to look at my records. But meanwhile, we'll send another record, I mean, another letter with your name on it. It's a light pole number zero nine zero. Please reiterate for me.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
First and foremost, I never received a letter from NIPSCO relating to any NIPSCO lights and this is probably the third letter.
Okay, what's the pole number?
So, the pole number is zero nine zero and it's the six thousand block of Tapper where the light has been out for two months. So, I've called them personally, I've sent the letter, and I'm requesting another letter be sent to them again.
Six thousand block at Tapper?
Yes.
Pole zero nine zero?
Yes.
All right. I just submitted it.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, Mayor, since you're up here, I see they're doing some work across the street at the old garage and their NIPSCO light is out as well. I have the number. Is it because they're...
Their NIPSCO light's out because of the work we're doing, Councilman.
Okay.
It's a five number.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Pole zero nine zero? Previous one?
You've got to be two numbers above it.
Thanks, Councilmen. Submitted.
Okay, so is there a second to send a letter to NIPSCO on pole number zero nine zero? Six thousand block at Tapper.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Torres to send a letter to NIPSCO regarding a light out on the six thousand block at Tapper, pole number zero nine zero. It's been out for six months and this is at the request of Councilman Higgs. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Probably have a C.C. sent to the engineering department seeing how that if you send the information to the engineering department and they send it to NIPSCO, probably going to happen a lot quicker.
Point of order.
Yes, Councilman.
Why are we voting on letters being sent?
Mm-hmm.
If he wants a letter sent, let him send it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I just did this on Hammond three eleven. Six thousand block at Tapper Avenue, NIPSCO light zero nine zero. Six thousand block at Tapper is out for the last six months. Can you provide the pole number zero nine zero? Metal or wood? Metal. It's assigned to street lighting with copy to I.T. It's all digital and it took like a minute and a half. I mean, instead of wasting all this time at government meetings and getting letters and putting stamps on letters and sending it to NIPSCO, wait for three weeks for them to open it, you could do it like this. Councilman Higgs, we go through this a lot and it takes care of it instantly. You could do it yourself. It saves so much time. We don't have to waste time at the city council meeting talking about this. We've got this great app that does it all for you. It's done.
Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Higgs.
My purpose for doing it, Mayor, is because for a number of times I've requested things to be done and they hadn't gotten done. So, I wanted it on the record that my constituents know that are watching, that don't attend the meetings, so they are aware that I am doing the best I can to serve them in the capacity that I was elected to do so.
Clerk Golick, let's do a roll call vote on this letter, please.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
No.
Vanez.
No. Let me see. Letter passes, six in favor, two opposed, one absent. All righty, any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
It seems to amaze me that all of a sudden that first and foremost, as a president of council, anytime you address my colleagues, you're supposed to actually relinquish the seat and allow the vice president to sit there. Secondly, as it relates to any issues that affect my district, I've been sending letters and I will continue to send letters because I want to make sure that it gets done and it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. So, that was the point of me doing it. If you have a problem with me doing my job as an elected official, I'm sorry, but that's the only way I know how to get it done, the proper way. And I've submitted letters, I've called, and I do everything I can to make sure my constituents are taken care of. I understand we're going into election year with all this unnecessary attacks. It's not necessary. I'm not attacking anyone. I've been doing this for years. It's actually, it's my fifteenth year. So, there you have it.
Thank you, Councilman Higgs. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
My only point on the whole issue was if we want to get technical about it, shouldn't we let him state what letters he wants sent and just pass that there, put on file in communications? I mean, seriously, should we be voting on letters that are being sent? What happens if we vote no for everybody? Does that mean he can't send a letter? I don't understand why we're voting on letters under new and unfinished business.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
It's because some people campaign from the council chair. I mean, it's stuff that could be taken care of on the record very easily. It's just saved up for political purposes, in my opinion. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of everybody's time. It's so much easier and more effective and the councilman could help people in his community do it directly themselves without waiting on the council person. Instead, we're doing it like it's nineteen sixty-eight. We've evolved. That's all I'm saying. And it is a waste of time, Councilman, I agree.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
Last meeting, we hired our administrative secretary. This meeting, I'd like to propose that I'd like to make a motion that we adopt her salary, that her salary be as adopted by the city, our city budget of the Hammond City Council.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
During the last meeting, we walked out of that meeting unsure exactly what you guys did, but we knew that you hired Susan to take over the position. It was posted at forty-two thousand dollars. We knew that. So, when we were asked, well, what's Susan's salary? We said it's what it was posted at. We applied it to her and that's what she's making right now, Councilman, so.
I second, Madam Chairman, I second his motion to hire at the posted salary in the budget.
Okay. Right. Because you guys had five votes and that was the posted salary. So, we didn't, I know there was talk about a lower salary, but we just said, give her the higher salary. And that's what her salary is plugged in through the controls.
Point of order.
Okay.
Point of order.
State your point of order.
First and foremost, I think the motion was made that there was never a second before we went into discussion. The mayor approached the podium and he's addressing the council, which he has that duty as a...
Didn't Councilman Warple second it?
No, he didn't.
Yes, he did.
Madam President, I have not done, and I don't know why you keep cutting me. I'm not here to argue with anyone. Do whatever you feel, Councilwoman Vanez. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm not trying to be rude. I just wanted Councilman Torres to know that when we, after the last council meeting, we reviewed the transcript and we said what we know for sure is five council people voted to give that open spot, which was the higher salary spot, the forty-two thousand, to Susan. There was some talk at the time about not giving her the full salary, but that talk didn't really go anywhere at the end of the council meeting. What did go was that five of you said she's the person, so we plugged her in at the forty-two thousand, Councilman. So, I mean, obviously, you could follow up and do whatever you want. I just wanted you to know that's how we approached the last meeting.
All right.
So, there's a motion on the floor by Councilman Torres to give Susan the posted salary. Was there a second by Councilman?
I seconded that.
All righty, any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
As we discussed at the last meeting, I think we all suggested that she get what was originally requested in our budget, forty-two thousand dollars. And as a secretary, I applaud her responsibilities and her duties as a secretary for nine individuals with different attitudes and different perceptions of different parts of the city and all kinds of issues that come up on a day-to-day basis. If you're going to be effective and get the job done, it takes a lot of dedication and hard work. So, the reality of it is, I think she not only deserves forty-two thousand, but I also would like to see her get an additional raise because it's a lot of work to deal with nine individuals. So, I applaud the motion and the second.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chairman, the actual number that was posted is forty-two thousand eight sixty-six. I just want to clarify that.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
And I believe as posted, it included the two percent raise, correct?
It would have been at the posted salary and then that posted salary gets two percent raise. Other, do you agree with that? It would have been at that posted salary she took it? So, next year, she'll get two percent raise. But...
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Certainly, again, as I stated previously, I am extremely pleased at the fact that we will have a full-time secretary. Unfortunately, Debbie was our secretary and I think it's appropriate that anyone that's over the office should get the same salary as the previous one. It's only fair and the right thing to do.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chairman, call for a vote?
All righty. Clerk Golick roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Councilman Torres's request passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
As I stated previously in past experiences, that we were allowed to actually take trips to learn how to be effective as councilmen. And I would hope that these, my colleagues would consider definitely attending conferences and getting additional training as it relates to the position in which they hold because I feel training is important, not just as a councilman, but in all areas as it relates to the City of Hammond.
Thank you, Councilman Higgs. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I know it's been said many times in many ways, but from our family to the whole city, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays because there's other celebrations going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. I also would like to wish Jake Jacobs, our cameraman, and our city clerk Golick, happy birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday, gentlemen. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
As well as Councilman Emerson, I would also like to wish everyone a Merry Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. May God continue to bless you and give you strength and understanding that we are all one and we are all entitled to speak what's right and what's of God. Thank you, Lord, for strength and mercy.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. George Stoya.
Come on, George. First of all, let me qualify my prospective comments that this is non-adversarial, even with Anthony. So, what I'm concerned about is the mayor's concern about having, I guess, members of his staff come up and answer questions. I, you know, I am, I guess, a citizen beneficiary, a principal to your agency as representatives of my citizenship, yada, yada, yada. And, you know, I don't come here just to get entertained. I'm here to learn how government works, how decisions are made, especially how the decisions are made, whether it's messy, whether it's, you know, I don't know how nuanced it can possibly get, but so I'm just puzzled. I mean, you know, I really am. I'm puzzled as to why the mayor objects to, or seems to object, to having his staff, especially the clerk treasurer, come up and address questions. I mean, I didn't know who Juan Moreno's was. I didn't know anything about the, how the tiffs were addressed or worked, so to speak.